Good evening and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Cablecast Public Hearing. We are discussing tonight the city of Pittsburgh's proposed annexation of Wilkinsburg Borough. We have a number of registered speakers and then everyone who is here, even if you're not registered, you will be given a chance to speak. So we're grateful for you to be here. And I am Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess. I represent the 9th Council District. I am the present pro tem or vice president sort of of council. And so I am hosting and conducting tonight's meeting on behalf of council. We will have perhaps other council members who will come and when they come, I will introduce them. So the first order of business is our clerk. We have the best clerk in the country. And so Brenda Prey, who will tell us the purpose of tonight's public hearing.
Tonight's public hearing is the city of Pittsburgh's proposed annexation of Wilkinsburg Borough.
Okay. And so the next thing we do is an overview. Now, council is in the midst of doing a more comprehensive study of the impact of Wilkinsburg upon the city of Pittsburgh. That report is not done yet, but we are doing it. It will be delivered to council as a formal report and it will be divided up into how it will impact each of our committees. The council is divided up into nine committees and so there'll be at least nine sections. And so I want to give an overview of, and again, I want to say from the beginning that there are disagreements, but in terms of of the information we have that has been reported us, I'm going to read what has been reported to us, saying with a disclosure that there's still some disagreement from some people about the veracity of the report and we want to respect their differing of agreements. Okay? And the first thing is the Pittsburgh region is unusually decentralized with hundreds of independent municipalities. That is really unusual, right? Philadelphia is bigger than us and you know, we have 100 and 100, maybe 120 municipalities they have won. Wilkinsburg is of course one of, in terms of the size of the city, it is a small municipality. It is about one twentieth of the size of Pittsburgh or a half of one of our council districts. And so Allegheny County has 130 municipalities, most of any US county in the country. And so the city of Pittsburgh has a little over 30,000 residents and Wilkinsburg has about 15,000 residents. And so again, Wilkinsburg is small compared to us. It is roughly one twentieth. And before I go too much further, I do want to thank the officers who are here. I want to thank John, who is our Sergeant of Arms, who's with us every day, and Ira, and our guest officers. God bless you. Thank you. I feel very safe tonight. All right. Wilkinsburg, Pittsburgh, and each municipality school districts have successful, Wilkinsburg and Pittsburgh, each municipality school district have successfully combined several functions over the past 15 years. In other words, we have already, in some ways, combined with Wilkinsburg. We've combined with Wilkinsburg in various ways. We combined the garbage collection in 2006 and so the city of Pittsburgh already collects the garbage of Wilkinsburg. We've done fire protection, the full integration of the Wilkinsburg Fire Department. In the Pittsburgh Fire Department, all the firefighters who wanted to be part of the city were brought into the city and that's been since 2011. And finally, last but not least, the public schools, the consolidated Wilkinsburg's middle and high schools. We do not yet have their grade schools. We do have their high school, their middle schools and their high schools and we have been educating them since 2015. And so let's kind of look at how that's occurred from the consolidations we've had. The Wilkinsburg Pittsburgh Firehouse consolidation 2011 efficiency, merged fire departments are able to spend less per capita and per acre to extend fire production to new neighborhoods in Wilkinsburg. Service quality, the merger resulted in expanded coverage and faster response time. Job retention, all Wilkinsburg firefighters were offered positions with the Pittsburgh Fire Department. And so we've increased the population. We have increased the land covered and increased the cost of fire protection as assessed. So next is the Wilkinsburg Pittsburgh garbage collection contract, 2006. Wilkinsburg was already contracting, so it was not, it was not collecting their own garbage. They were contracting with Waste Management, a Houston-based private waste collection company before contracting with Pittsburgh's Department of Public Works. The contract with Pittsburgh has provided Wilkinsburg with roughly 680,000 of annual savings when compared to the cost of contracting with Waste Management. So it's, you know, saved Wilkinsburg over a half a million dollars. Service, individual property owners are still responsible for waste removal for multifamily and commercial building while Pittsburgh's DPW took over waste removal for single-family homes and smart and small apartment buildings. If you really look at the history of the city, really, really since its beginning, you'll see that's how it grew was through a series of mergers. Pittsburgh was actually a bunch of little small towns that slowly and surely over time became merged and it has a history of merging services with nearby municipalities, including Ingram, where I was born, Mount Oliver and Millville. The Ingram Fire Department, Pittsburgh City Council voted unanimously, I was there then, to provide firefighting services to Ingram in 2015. The Oliver Schools, the Oliver in Pittsburgh share a school board. The contract also, the municipality also contracts EM Emergency Medical Services with the city was there for that vote too. And then Millville Water and Sewer, Pittsburgh's take over of the Millville water system allows for the funding of system upgrades and repairs. And so for all of our places that we have merged with, it has been a positive experience. All the services we've merged with has been a positive experience on behalf of both parties. Wilkinsburg in the school district face structural economic challenges. The loss of 4,100 residents since 2000, which is 20% of its population. It has a steadily declining tax break, tax base.
That is not true. You know that is not true. I would not interrupt you except for a false and absolutely false statement.
So before you came, I said out loud, I will say again, that there are people who disagree with these facts. I respect your right to disagree. I would ask, I would ask politely that you allow me, I won't talk, I would, I would, I would prefer if you don't talk when I'm talking, I won't talk when you're talking. It will be very respectful. I understand that you disagree and I apologize, I apologize if for any way what I am saying bothers you, offends you, but I would, but I would prefer, I prefer you just to be nice and kind today and let me finish. That's okay, officer. She's going to be nice and let me finish. Now, it has a steadily declining tax base. It has deterrence, which is a deterrent to private investment. It has 4.8% property tax rate compared to 2.3 with Pittsburgh. These structural challenges by many objective observers will limit the borough and the school district's ability to invest and improve services. Under revenue, underlying property tax revenue will remain stagnant without tax breaks, growth, or increased stock rates. Earned income tax revenue is susceptible to economic cycles. Expenditures, rising costs, including high overtime costs due to the lack of manpower and an aging infrastructure. And so you will see that Wilkinsburg, and some say, will be bankrupt in a few years. There's some disagreements to that, but that is what the, the objective observers have said. Without a merger, Wilkinsburg will experience a growing deficit as personal growth outpaces revenue and high property taxes and poor services constrain tax base growth. And in 2028, they had to eat 0.8 million dollars, Andrew thousand. In 2028, they will have a 0.8 million dollar deficit in this, in the city and by 2028, they will have, they'll only have a 2.2 million dollar deficit, annual deficit for the school board. So in the next few years, without a change, they will be running structural deficits. All right? And so then there is a process and I will say this, as I have said before, that I, I will not decide the future of Wilkinsburg. Only Wilkinsburg residents will decide their future. What will happen is those interested parties have the right by state law to collect signatures. They will collect a percentage of signatures and they will give that signatures to the Allegheny County Court. The court will then review those signatures. If they have enough valid signatures, automatically the judge will send the petition for annexation to city council. City council has 90 days to either approve or disapprove annexation. We are not allowed to not vote on it. The judge will demand that we give an up or down vote on annexation. If we say no, as we did last year, then the annexation process stops. If council gives its approval, then the annexation question goes to the ballot in Wilkinsburg. All right? So again, Wilkinsburg voters, at the end of the day, will make this determination, not Pittsburgh voters. And if Wilkinsburg votes in favor of annexation, then the following January, automatically Wilkinsburg in its school district will become part of the city of Pittsburgh. And then we will work with the Wilkinsburg officials to talk about what that merger will look like and what the transition teams will look like. And so probably the full school merger would not occur as the, even, because it will start off in January, then full merger of the schools probably would not happen till the following September to give the school board a chance. And I know there are passionate people, probably on both sides of the issue. I do hear that. I wish state law was different. If I was the king of the world, this would not be the process that I would believe we should use. I believe if I was king of the world, it would be a vote of both the Pittsburgh City Council and Wilkinsburg City Council, the citizens of Pittsburgh and the citizen of Wilkinsburg. That's what I would do if I had a choice. Unfortunately, this archaic annexation law, which last was used for the merging of Northside to Pittsburgh, is outside of my control. And so all I can do is follow the law, which means to listen to you, both those in Pittsburgh and Wilkinsburg, to get your opinion. At the end of the day, I will have to vote for or against annexation, which really means giving the Wilkinsburg voters a chance to vote. And as I said before, I am leaning now toward voting yes on annexation of giving Wilkinsburg residents a chance to vote. I do believe and have said publicly and privately, I believe it's in the best interest of the Wilkinsburg residents to be part of the city of Pittsburgh. I am the one that will be most disaffected by this, by the way. Almost all of Wilkinsburg borders my district and at least 60, if not 100% of Wilkinsburg will become part of my council district. So the future of Wilkinsburg will be the 9th Council District. Either 60% of it, but if I are, if they listen to me, it would be all of it. I think Wilkinsburg should be left intact and become, if it becomes part of the city, it should become one solid piece of the 9th Council District, which means that it would become a half of my council district, which also means probably the next council district from the 9th Council District would come from Wilkinsburg. And I'm fully aware of that and expect that to occur if annexation happens. I will work with that person, probably to represent the new 9th Council District. So I'm laying all my cards on the table and I'm grateful for you coming. Now, I have registered speakers. I'm going to go through the registered speakers first, but I'm not sure all of you are here. And then even if you're not registered, I will give you, after I complete calling out the registered speakers, if you're here, I'll also give you three minutes to speak. Okay? That's the process. So the next thing will be for me to go through the registered speakers and then those who are not registered and then if we have time, I'll go over if there's other questions you have of me. So the first thing, and I need a pen so I can keep track, Renee Donnie, my friend? I hope, but now friends?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
I think so too.
Yeah, hi Reverend Burgess.
How you doing?
Good. My name is Renee Donnie and I live in Wilkinsburg. I'd actually love to invite you to come to Wilkinsburg and look around because it's not some flaming mess as has been perceived. So one of the things that really bothers me, I have some points I wanted to make, but the first thing I want to say is I really feel like it's not a good faith effort. The fact that you come in here with this WCDC-driven data that we have told you repeatedly is not true. So one of the problems that we have with it is with their data, there are just conclusions. They don't show the underlying data that they draw these conclusions from. And we can tell you from the data that we get, the publicly available data that you can go down to Wilkinsburg and get from our finance department, that none of these things are true. And you don't have to take my word for it. Rich Lord and Public Source just published a review of every municipality in Allegheny County and their property tax receipts. And so from 2014 to 2022, and I'm going to not, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but it's close enough. I'll ballpark it. Wilkinsburg increased by 6%. Swissvale, the Swissvale miracle, Swissvale's on its way back. Oh, Swissvale's already considered a upper middle-class borough, increased by 4%. So Wilkinsburg actually increased greater than Swissvale's did over that period and that's Rich Lord and Public Source. You don't necessarily have to take my word for it. The other point, another, so the first big point I want to make is there's quite a difference between shared services to save money and losing your political autonomy. And nobody in Wilkinsburg wants to lose their political autonomy. And what's more actually, everybody in Wilkinsburg is pretty happy with their services. We like our DPW, our streets are clean, we love our schools. We really, really do. I sent my son to Wilkinsburg Public School. He went to Westinghouse for three weeks and that was enough. So, and this is just in the last four years, so this is not like back in the olden days, Wilkinsburg was great. It's great right now.
I can't hear everything you're saying.
Sorry.
But it's odd, excuse me.
Oh, okay.
There's no sound system in the room.
Okay, I'm as loud as I can be.
And she's talking, you want to come closer to us? You can?
I'm talking to Reverend Burgess though because he's the decision maker.
I'm sorry, it's the way the structure works, that they, they speak to us. Sorry.
But, but because I've talked to you so many, many times, so you know here, but here's, here's what's new since we last saw each other. So as you know, the Wilkinsburg Community Development Corporation is who has really been pushing this and they have had hundreds of thousands of dollars to push this. They've had massive amounts of public meetings. They've sent out mailers and flyers. And so one of the things that we looked into was like, oh, we'll put our mailers and flyers together. It's $9,000 a time, right? And they send out, I don't know, six, seven, eight, a fortune, right? Money that could have actually been used to redevelop Wilkinsburg, but they're working on this instead, whatever. It's immaterial. May 17th was primary election day. So we have a pretty organized opposition at this point. Like a year ago, we didn't know what we were doing. Now we know what we're doing. And so we were at the polls, right? Because you saw that timeline, it's going to be on the ballot in a year. Great, we're at the polls, we've got our flyers, we're there all day. I live in Black Ridge, so this is one of the affluent areas that everybody would think would be a hotbed of support for annexation. And I really did not know how my neighbors were going to take this. So this is Ward 1 and my, my priest, my, the voting district I was at covered four precincts. So that is 70% of the first ward, which is all the, okay. 85% of the people are against it. So with all the hundreds of thousands of dollars they put into it, people are virulently against it. This thing, even if the opposition withers away and dies, will never pass. So don't keep wasting our time. I know Rich Fitzgerald wants this. I know Bill Shank wants it. It's immaterial. It's not going to pass. It is still a democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Symphony Highsmith. Love that name. Are you here Symphony?
Symphony Highsmith, I'll say it, so the name, wonderful name, Symphony, Symphony Highsmith. Paul O'Hanlon. Paul, are you here? Paul O'Hanlon. Paul, are you here? Well, perhaps they will come at some point. Colin Dean.
One second. One second. I have a few information. So I am unfortunately a reader from my notes. Otherwise we go off on tangents. All right. All right. Hello. Thank you to the Pittsburgh City Council for engaging the public on hearing, for these multiple hearings on municipal consolidation. My name is Colin Dean. I'm a Western Pennsylvanian native from Lawrence County. I moved to Forest Hills 14 years ago, where I lived for a year before moving to Squirrel Hill and then to Regent Square for around two years. Then I bought a house in Wilkinsburg where I've lived now for a decade. As the creator of the first tax calculator tool for Wilkinsburgers to understand the tax implications of annexation, I'm happy to talk about and demonstrate to anyone here their personal tax implications of annexation. But tonight I want to talk about elections. Our house is a poll working house. I'm a second-term elected judge of election for my voting district. My partner has been an appointed judge for a neighboring district for several elections too now. I want to draw your attention to the timing of this annexation effort, specifically as it relates to voter turnout and how proponents may inadvertently disenfranchise up to 11% of Wilkinsburg's active voters should this sorted proposal find its way onto a ballot. Nearly everyone in this room is aware that annexation proponents aim for a ballot referendum for the May 2023 primary election. According to county voter registration data, approaching 11% of Wilkinsburg residents who have voted in the last eight years are third-party or independent voters. There are 66% more of these than there are Republicans in Wilkinsburg. Pennsylvania's closed primary election system normally excludes these third-party and independent voters from primary elections in which Democrats and Republicans choose their candidates for the November general election. So these voters have learned to ignore the primary, ignore the primary elections and not bother to show up. A strange departure from this was the state legislature's placement of four ballot questions on the May 2021 ballot, the first, the first such action in most folks' memory. Turnout for the third-party and independent voters in Wilkinsburg was less than half of the majority parties. This happened despite tremendous effort by some parties to turn out voters who have been programmed to believe that they don't vote in primary elections. Proponents of annexation are exploiting this to deny voice to upwards of 11% of Wilkinsburgers from voting on the annexation question by hiding it from them. If proponents actually wanted meaningful consensus from the majority of Wilkinsburg voters, they target this question for the 2022 midterm or the 2024 presidential election. Instead, they're hoping to stack the deck of electors by asking the question in an election that historically has the lowest turnout. You can read more about this with my full analysis and data and work on wilkinsburgfuture.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That's Colin, right? Next, we have Bernie Wetzel, who I know.
Bernie Wetzel, I know is with us.
Reverend Burgess. My name is Bernie Wetzel. I have been a resident of Wilkinsburg my whole life. Graduated from Wilkinsburg High School. My sister did. My brother did. Our family's been in Wilkinsburg since 1937. I know there are a lot of passionate people who are interested in the best interests and the best future for Wilkinsburg. I believe that annexation is the best path for Wilkinsburg, primarily because property taxes would be cut in half. I've talked to a number of private developers, people who would come in and invest in, in improving the commercial buildings in the downtown center. They can't do that because once they make the improvements, the value of the property goes up, they can't get the same kind of rents that they can get elsewhere and they're going to be paying higher taxes. That's why we haven't seen private development come in. Further, there are individuals who I know from, who do moderate to low-income housing. They've told me flat out that because of the property taxes, those projects don't work in Wilkinsburg. They can't get the monies, they can't get the numbers to work. Further, I think that the, when, for seven years leading up to last June, I was president of the CDC Board. And what I, when we first began talking about annexation, I, along with the rest of the board insisted that we do our homework, get the facts, analyze the data. Having done that, it appears to me and appears to those of us who are there, that there is a compelling case for change as a result. So PFM, HRNA, these are two well-regarded municipal finance firms. They did an analysis and I believe City Council is working with PFM to validate those statistics. We've lost 20% of our population in the last 20 years. We've lost 20% of our black population in the last 10 years. I believe that our best hope for turning that around, bringing investment into the community and stemming the tide of both vacant houses and departure of our population is through annexation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Donna Baur. Am I saying your name right?
Donna Bauer.
Bauer. Donna Bauer.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Donna Bauer and since 2014, I have been a resident of the city of Pittsburgh. First as a renter in Bakery Square and now as the owner of a condo in Chatham Towers. I'm here in support of the annexation. Before moving to the city, I was a resident of Wilkinsburg for 20 years. Because of that experience, I feel like I can speak very well to Wilkinsburg's benefits to the annexation. But when I sold my home there, the taxes for the new owner were upwards of $10,000. No community can sustain that for any length of time. Today I'm speaking as a city resident and all I can say is what has taken so long? This seems like a no-brainer to me. It would be easy to say that the high taxes are Wilkinsburg's problem, but I believe that we need to have a regional perspective because when one community thrives, we all thrive and when one suffers, we all suffer. I think the economic benefits have been made clear. There's decreased property taxes for the residents and businesses in Wilkinsburg. There's efficiencies and savings from shared services. There's an increase for the city's population that will increase its tax base and its ability to attract new business and new people. And more investment in Wilkinsburg will only lead to more jobs for both residents of Wilkinsburg and Pittsburgh. The Wilkinsburg Community Development Corporation and its partners have done a great job in revitalizing Wilkinsburg, but they can only take it so far. While Pittsburgh, Pittsburghers love their neighborhoods and their distinct identities, continuing to look at this region, sorry I'm being attacked by something, continuing to look at this region through a narrow lens holds us all back. How many of us really know what the neighborhood boundaries are, where they begin and where they end? It is time that we look at this as a group, as a, excuse me, it is time to end the fragmentation of the city and work and grow together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of speakers. Symphony Highsmith is not here. Paul O'Hanlon is not here. And so anyone who wants to speak tonight, if you would come and line up by the microphone, please, we'll give you three minutes to talk. Just always to start with your name and neighborhood.
Kate Luxemburg. I've been a resident of Wilkinsburg for 55 years. I'm a data analyst. I really respect facts, numbers, and the way to measure tax base is by property assessment. Rich Lord, as my colleague Renee Donnie mentioned, published in Public Source after we objected to this drumbeat of steadily declining tax base, he researched it and found what Renee spoke to, that our tax base, our total taxable assessment has risen since year 2014. What people like Bernie Wetzel and Donna Bauer don't like is that those very expensive, well-built, built-to-be expensive houses in the minority of Wilkinsburg, the Regent Square neighborhood, sell for huge prices and then are assessed based on their sale price. We are not interested in running Wilkinsburg to make life better for the people who buy these expensive houses. That's not what we are all about. That is a very small part of Wilkinsburg and we don't want to be run by the minority. Let's talk about signatures for a minute. The two We are not interested in running Wilkinsburg to make life better for the people who buy these expensive houses. That's not what we are all about. That is a very small part of Wilkinsburg, and we don't want to be run by the minority. Let's talk about signatures for a minute. The two people who gathered the most signatures for this petition the last time around as volunteers, excluding the people who were paid to gather signatures, were two women who live in expensive houses in this Regent Square neighborhood. They both recently put their houses up for sale, and both houses sold in less than a week. The one owner got $200,000 more than she paid for her house two or three years ago. The other owner got $150,000 more than she paid for her house a couple of years ago. They're not going to be around to gather signatures again. That's what happens in Wilkinsburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Celeste Banks. I've been a resident for 30 years in Wilkinsburg. I grew up in Wilkinsburg. For that reason, I did not send my children to Wilkinsburg schools. So, I guess it's better now the way it is. I don't have kids in school anymore, so I want to know what the rate is for rubbish removal in Pittsburgh for, per home. Can you tell me that?
No.
Okay. How can I find that out? How can I learn that?
Before I leave, you mean, I'll give you a way of contacting me? Any data that you want from us, I can send to you.
Because our garbage removal rate increased after we came under Pittsburgh's. I don't know why.
I'll give you, if there's any information you need from the city, I can forward to you.
Okay. I'd appreciate that.
Of course.
I'm actually for the annexation to bring down the tax rate. The taxes in Wilkinsburg, that's all I do is pay taxes and bills. There's no fun in life, but I'm stuck in a house that I can't even sell, so...
And you can sell your house.
Hey, let's not argue. You don't live in my house.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Councilman Burgess, thanks for having this, hosting this. And my name is Joseph Papa. I moved to Wilkinsburg...
A little closer.
A little closer. My name is Joseph Papa. I moved to Wilkinsburg only about a year ago. I grew up in Penn Hills, so I know that a lot of people want longevity before you can speak, but I think I have some relevant newer experiences. I'm a city school teacher. I teach at Beechwood Elementary in Beachview. My partner works in, thank you, I appreciate that, my partner works in HIV healthcare at AGH. And the property tax burden is real. You know, our incomes aren't that high, and the property tax values, we got hit with a reassessment from the school district as soon as we bought, and it's tough. Wilkinsburg property taxes are a burden on newer people, and I think dismissing that as like, "Well, if you don't like it, just live somewhere else." But I love Wilkinsburg. My grandmother lived on Finley Drive in a rental when I was a kid, the whole time I was growing up until she couldn't live by herself anymore. It's a great community. My mom taught at a school for the deaf. It's a nice place, and I've been around it for a long time. And I see some of the benefits of the annexation, and my idea is, put it up for a vote. Let the people have a say. I don't see why we should be so angry right now and shout down just putting something on a ballot for people to have a decision to make. And I also appreciate that you led with the facts, with some very good information, and a really polite presentation. I have to say, I was a little dismayed. I did go to a Wilkinsburg Council presentation, and I enjoyed your presentation, so I'll leave it at that, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other speakers? Before I conclude the meeting, since you've come out tonight, and I'm here, if you have any questions, even though this is not normal, but since you're here, and we're in formal group, and I appreciate you coming, coming far, if you have questions of me, I don't, I won't argue with you, but I can answer if you have specific questions about the city, or our process, or any of those things, I'll answer them before we leave tonight. Sure?
Yeah, so my understanding was that potentially you guys are going to come and do meetings in Wilkinsburg? What is the status of that?
So, the question was, because they can't hear you on the broadcast, the question from the floor was about the Wilkinsburg meetings. We did meet with Wilkinsburg Mayor and talked about them hosting us. So, really, Councilman Lavelle is the chair of this committee. He will hopefully schedule dates to meet in Wilkinsburg, where we come to Wilkinsburg and listen. So that has not yet, I don't know if they've been scheduled yet, I don't think they've been scheduled yet, but that is, the plan is to come to have at least one to two meetings in Wilkinsburg. If we're invited, we have to be in, we cannot come, we cannot host a meeting in Wilkinsburg unless we're invited in.
Okay, so who, because we would like to make sure this happens. We'd like for you to come.
That would be the mayor and the council. One of the, some combination of them would have to invite us in. And we've talked to them, they said that they would, they just not have it yet, they haven't yet.
And then you say, because one of the, one of the real disagreements we have is that that information is incorrect, and it really, it really is. So, what are you doing, fact-finding for financial information about, for solvency, about the situation?
So, I think, when I listened to you, and I don't, again, in a debate, what it sounded like you told me was that the taxable rate of Wilkinsburg has went up. I think that's what you said, right?
No, 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 not the tax rate. The property value.
The property values have went up.
Correct.
That, the question is, has the tax receipts went up? And I don't know the answer to that, but, but, but there is a study being done, that's not this, that will be given to council.
Are you talking to our panelists?
I, I am not, I am not, I am not directly conducting the study. So every councilperson is conducting the study on the thing that my committee is, is, is parks. And so, I'm looking at Wilkinsburg in terms of parks. Every Councilman Lavelle would be the councilman who's looking at the tax rate. He's the chair of Finance and Law, so that's really a question for him. Next question. So, as I have said at every meeting, I will say again, I've said this off-record, I've said this on-record. As you've seen, by the means that we have, there is not a widespread disenchantment from the citizens of Pittsburgh about the annexation of Wilkinsburg. That it is not an issue that they are all that passionate about. And so, I believe this is a Wilkinsburg issue, right? And I believe, and have said to those who are passionate, that instead of being passionate against us, because our job is simply yes or no, what will give the, the Wilkinsburg residents an opportunity to vote, I think the best use of those who do not want this annexation, the best use of their time is to persuade Wilkinsburg voters, in case we vote yes, to dissuade them from the annexation. I think that's the best use of your time. I think right now, it's a pretty evenly divided council. I don't, I don't, I can't promise it either way. I do know that there are some of us who voted no, like me, who are much more likely to vote yes this time around, and, and my reason for voting yes is very simple. I am persuaded that Wilkinsburg will be in dire financial situations in the next five years without intervention. And, and I'm sure, if those of you know me, I have been perhaps one of the most active councilpeople in terms of economic development in the city. I was former the chair of our Housing Authority, and so I'm, I'm very familiar with economic development, and I am completely convinced, now this is no, this is not for debate, I'm not going to debate with you, I guarantee you this, if Wilkinsburg becomes part of the city of Pittsburgh, it will jump-start development tenfold in Wilkinsburg. Now that part, I know as a fact. The property rates, the property taxes simply make development in Wilkinsburg almost impossible for most of the city. And so, if it, if the lower rates came in effect, the market alone, the market alone would begin to turn over houses in Wilkinsburg almost immediately. That part, I know for a fact. I'm not going to argue. I'm telling you, based on my knowledge of having, having overseen the Housing Authority of the city of Pittsburgh for many, many years, and having been part of a variety of development projects in Pittsburgh, I'm pretty sure that coming to Wilkinsburg would see a significant, almost overnight influx of development dollars into its corridors. Question?
So, does that mean that all these buildings and homes that are just ice and falling down will be torn down?
No. So, I don't want to do a primer in development, but I'll kind of talk about, there is a website, I was blessed, I had a millionaire, actually, give us, give me and a group, we worked with a million dollars, to create a process to rebuild communities. It's called the Help Initiative. You can look it up, it has a website, it's on website, it's called H E L P P G H dot org. It is a formal, step-by-step process of how communities, especially challenging communities, are redeveloped. And so, in essence, what happens is, the place in Wilkinsburg that's closest to wealth, your wealthier corridors, and those closest to wealth normally are the areas where public investment will come, right? We'll start on those fringes rebuilding those communities, because what you want to do is you want to bring the market in. There is not enough money in any municipality, there is not enough private money to rebuild those communities. There's not enough money in Homewood, there's not enough money in Lomer. The city of Pittsburgh does not have enough money to rebuild its communities. The private market does. And so, what you do is you strategically put in private development, I mean, public development to coax private development to come in, and then overnight, not overnight, but fairly quickly, you start to see rapid development. The problem with Wilkinsburg is because of their tax rate, that it structurally is, doesn't make good financial situation unless you have these higher-income houses. They, it's harder for them to be rehabbed because the mortgages and getting the second mortgages would be so high. The best example in the city of, at least my work, in case you want to see the work that I've done, and sort of, and since I may be a part of this, if it comes, it'll be in part, part of my work, is Lomer. If you go to where the Target is, and you drive down Station Street for three, four blocks behind the Target, you'll see the work we've done, and you'll see, for the first time, you'll see both affordable housing and market-rate housing, and brand-new, brand-new housing and amenities, and the newest park in Pittsburgh, and the residents are able to walk the Target, walk the Whole Foods, walk the Trader Joe's. And so, without, without a long discussion on development, which is something, which is my expertise in part, just looking at it on its face, given the bones that Wilkinsburg has, and its proximity in terms of wealthy communities, that alone means, if you lower its, if you can lower its tax rate, there's a high likelihood that you'll get private investment in Wilkinsburg, because it will make sense to them. Why? Because they'll be able to get the properties in Wilkinsburg right now cheaper than the city and cheaper than those communities. They'll build them up, they'll build, they'll, so some of the offshore houses will not get torn down, they'll actually be rehabbed. Right now, they can't be rehabbed because if you, you can't get them, the way it works is you have to be able to get your money out of the property, right? And if the taxes are too high, it cuts down the profit margin, and so there's less likelihood of development. Again, I didn't mean to have this long conversation with you, but, but this is my area of expertise, right? I have been responsible for probably about 1,000 units of housing during my time on council. I've chaired the Housing Authority for probably, I can't remember now, seven, eight years. I am one of the most active members of economic development in the city, and so I know this backwards and forwards, and, and again, I'm not, I'm not, I have never told Wilkinsburg residents what they should do. Any of the meetings, I have never said a word about what I think the residents of Wilkinsburg should do or not do. I've simply talked about what I think the possibilities are going to be if Wilkinsburg is taken over. Lastly, since you asked me, I'll say it, and I know we're going to leave in a little bit. The enemy of communities is not racial at all, it's not, it's not, it's not age. The enemies of communities is what's called concentrated poverty. A sociologist out of Harvard who passed recently, Wilson, wrote tremendous books about it, and was the foremost scholar in this area. It's when you put all poor people together in a concentrated community, that community cannot thrive. The only way that you can make communities thrive is to consciously and deliberately transform them into mixed-income neighborhoods. And all the work I've done, we've not built public housing by itself. We've built public housing, and we've made what's called mixed income. One-third very poor, one-third working class, one-third market rate. So if you come to Homewood for the first time ever now, we have houses where the rents are $1,200. You come to Lomer, same thing. You have these now market-rate housing that's now attracting other market-rate housing. And it's just, I think that we, for good or for bad, Pittsburgh has the economic muscle to, we have the muscle to bring more development to Wilkinsburg. Whether you vote for us or not, it's a different conversation. Does that, does that make some sense?
Yes.
All right. Yes.
So I have a really important point, and this is really important to understand, and for you as well. What causes, and I say this, I'm a member of the Wilkinsburg Land Bank Experiencing Committee, which just passed last night, so Wilkinsburg can only have that. The cause of life in Wilkinsburg is not taxes, it's not lack of investment, it's titles. 85% of those houses that you see that are falling apart are owned by a dead person. Sorry, I've lived in Wilkinsburg for 30 years, so you can start flipping through your mind. Oh yeah, that person died. Oh yeah, that person died. So I'm not going to pretend that there wasn't a public policy failure 30 years ago, and they should have done something about those houses, but now you have a house that's owned by a dead person. Do you know that they buy a house from a dead person? Absolutely nobody. That means it has to go before a judge. So the land, and this is not a problem that Wilkinsburg alone has, this is a statewide problem, it's a countrywide problem. But the Pennsylvania State Legislature created something called the Land Bank Statutes in 2013, and then reworked them in 2017. So it's a newish model of what the land bank can do, is take these properties and clean up the title, because nobody can fix a house they own now.
So, in my other hat, I'm the chair of the Pittsburgh Land Bank. I'm its chairman of boards, chairman of the board. And so, we've just committed $2 million of, of clearing title. We have $2 million from our ARPA funds that we gave to the, to the land bank specifically to clear titles. We are in the midst of clearing titles very, very rapidly with an outside firm. So I, I, again, I don't mean to talk about me. This is the work I do, as you see. I know a lot about development, a lot about land issues, but I want us to go home. It's 7 o'clock, you've been here, I really appreciate it, I think we've exhausted the conversation. I'm going to adjourn the meeting publicly, but I will talk privately to anyone who still remains. All right?
How many houses has the Pittsburgh Land Bank moved back into productive use?
Pardon me?
The Pittsburgh Land Bank was founded in 2014.
Yes.
How many houses have moved through the Pittsburgh Land Bank back to productive use?
I do not think any...
Two.
So, you're...
So, the Pittsburgh Land Bank is not a solution.
So, I didn't say, I was...
The ARPA money for clearing titles is a solution.
I, I, the land banks, the land bank of Pittsburgh's, that's a longer conversation that we can have at a different day, because that's not the purpose of the night's meeting. I appreciate, I didn't, I, I'd never said that it was. I appreciate you coming out, I appreciate you. Thank you for coming. God bless you and good night. This means adjourned.